Kev? Get up. Good evening and welcome to the August 26th meeting of the Bella Vista City Council. Will you please rise and join us for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the roll call of council. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Burke?
Here.
Wilms?
Here.
All present.
Okay, the first item is citizen input. This is a time for you to speak to us. It's not a debating thing, but it, um, I'll be calling you each up. Those of you that have signed here, you'll have three minutes and, uh, then the council, in a, in a change in the, in the agenda as a result of some rule changes we have done, will then respond. Um, again, it won't be a debate, but an opportunity for them to answer individually as, on their own behalf as opposed to speaking on behalf of council. And then if you want to continue to the conversation after, then we'll all be here as well. So we'll begin first with Mr. Fullberson.
This is my second time here on the same problem.
Right up here. Sorry, sorry. So they can hear you.
This is my second time here on the same problem. Parking my truck on my gravel in my yard. I shouldn't have any problem with it. I should be established there. It's been there since 2003, my truck and my yard. I should be grandfathered in. And I keep getting these things from Cheyenne.
Don't start. Mm-hmm.
Why do I, last time I was here, I thought it was all clear and gonna be complete. And I'm back again with one. Am I gonna be doing this every month?
Doug, are you able to meet with Mr. Fullberson, please? Cheyenne's boss's boss is right back there. Now, do you want to hold your hand up, Doug?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll talk to him.
Good. Alrighty.
But I should be established. Been there since 2003. My truck isn't bothering anybody. Nobody's bothering my truck. It's on three inches of gravel. It's fine, as far as I know.
Okay.
I have no problems with it. I think that, I hope that's the last of it.
Well, we'll let you meet with Doug and I'll follow up with him as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good night.
Comment?
We're gonna comment in the next section.
That microphone's not working, I don't think.
Is it turned on?
It is on.
I thought it was working.
It's on.
Testing, testing. Oh, there you go.
Oh, that one's hot.
Do I do it again?
No, no, it's okay. Alrighty, Mr. Gilman, you're up.
Thank you. Do I have to say my address?
Uh, are you living at 36?
36 Kirk-Caldy Drive.
Great, thank you.
My name is Dan Gilman. And, uh, I was expecting five other people to be here tonight. They didn't show, and, uh, I was wondering if I could have their 15 minutes.
No. That's a good try, though.
Anyway, uh, it all came, I became aware of our burning policy sort of the hard way, I think. Um, my wife is, you know, she's reading on the porch. She comes in the house and tells about this ash that's in the air. So I go out and sure enough, there's a lot of ash. And, uh, I don't really know the source of the ash, if it was the wood being burned itself or a starter, you know. Well, anyway.
This is from the burning of, of, uh, logs on adjoining lot that's being built, if I remember correctly. Is that correct?
Yes, I contacted you.
Right, and I think you've spoken to Chief Sims as well. Right.
Fireman, or Fire Chief Sims as well. Okay. And of course, it's the smoke in the air, I guess, just like those people from the stump dump experienced. And it's putrid, acrid, whatever you want to say. I looked it up and there is, there are pollutants associated with wood smoke that aren't healthy. Green wood. This is what we're burning. We're burning generally green wood. And, uh, I know, coming from Wisconsin, that you don't burn green wood, especially in your fireplace. I called the dispatch. I called them previous to today. And, um, I, I really don't like the way they do this. I don't really know exactly how they do it, but I don't, just from what I was told, I don't think it's a good way to do it. In other words, um, somebody calls apparently for a permit and they're granted a permit just based on that call. In other words, she said there are parameters, you know, they have to be at the, at the fire, they have to have a water source, et cetera. Well, uh, because I became aware of this, as I mentioned, it was in my neighborhood. Okay. And, um, I know, I saw the lot being cleared. And, uh, it was a deep lot, probably as long as a football field, believe it or not. And, um, so, and heavily wooded, so you couldn't mount them, the amount of slashings and logs and whatever. And this person is attempting to burn it. Well, if you looked at it today, you wouldn't even know he was, had burned anything because he's burning green wood. And it smoulders. It just smoulders. So I went down and I had words with him after I had contacted everybody. I wish I hadn't, but he was not there. He was not attending that fire. And it was, I couldn't see any flames, but it was smoldering pretty good. Okay. That's my beef about your policy for burning. I called the dispatch and much, I could not believe this. I don't know, you want to play a little guessing game? How many permits have been issued since January 1st? 2,235.
I don't think it's permit so much. Chief, isn't it, they call in to determine if there's a burn ban? And then if there's no burn ban, then we ask them to give us the address? Okay.
Well, that might be the case.
Sure, that's okay. Just wanted to make sure.
But I don't think that's a good way to address this. They keep a log. And they have no idea what is, where the, I mean, they might know the address, but they don't know the amount. They don't know the person's skill at burning. I don't want somebody burning that amount of wood. I don't want their ash on my property. And your policy allows debris from his fire to land on my property. Okay? I wasn't gonna get huffy about this, but, um, okay.
I think we're just about out of time, Dan, so.
Okay, can I just say one more?
Please do, yep.
Please, thank you. All right, I'm talking to Mayor Christie and, um, I also, I also talked to Tom Judson. Um, and both of them told me their cap plan for something in the county. Well, Rogers was mentioned. And I'm thinking about this, where in the world would Rogers, unless they have something like Bentonville in mind? And if it's, we're talking about distance here, hauling distance. Also, um, oh, I slipped my mind, thought, kinda, well, anyway, um, I think that should be taken, taken into consideration, because we have plenty of area here. We're much bigger than Rogers and much bigger than Bentonville. And I called the street department and we have a chipper.
Mm-hmm.
And I would, um, suggest that you go online and look at these commercial chippers they have. Our chipper, the guy told me, takes a 18-inch diameter log. Well, they have chippers that will take much more than that available. And I don't know if there's any call for this, the chips are not, you know, commercially or anything, but I'd like you to reconsider this burning policy because I think it's inconsiderate of neighbors breathing in that smoke, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. That ends the citizen input, um, council. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll kick it off in response, uh, response to Dan's. Yes, there is indeed plans afoot by the Benton County Solid Waste Management and the city of Rogers to put together a mulching, composting operation. All the necessary documents have been filed with ADEQ and they are now waiting for it to come back. It's going to be a very large operation. It'll be bigger than Bentonville's. Bentonville, as some of you have already known, has now turned off the spigot for any of the other cities to bring in their stuff. And I suspect in the not-too-distant future, they're going to have to turn off their own spigot to their own residences, and that's why we're working to try and get this regional one put together. Chippers? Yeah, we have a chipper, um, and we use it when we're clearing along the roads. And after the stump dump problem, and of course, that doesn't exist anymore here, we too are feeling the pain. We at one point had 125 truckloads of chips that we couldn't get rid of. If we were to take it to the Tawney Town, um, dump, the tipping fee was $150 a load. Now, we did try and find a commercial use for it, thinking that perhaps they could dry it out and the chicken farmers could use it, but because it's primarily oak, the chicken farmers won't touch it, they want pine. Now, we have offered free mulch, as much as you can possibly carry to all the residents, and we have been able to decrease the number of truckloads down to about 50. But we are feeling the, uh, the pain as well, Dan, so I understand. As far as the, um, the smoke is concerned, um, I'll, I'll talk to both Director Tapp and Chief Sims about this, um, and, and see what we can do. I can tell you that, um, typically, the builders do burn on the lot, they don't haul it away. And we have had a few calls, Chief, if I remember, where there has been smoke and ash and we've had to go out. So we'll talk about that as well. So thanks for bringing it up again, Dan, I appreciate it. Alrighty.
Can I, can I, I think another gentleman came in for public comment and he missed the sign-up sheet. Is it all right if he comes up?
Scott?
I mean.
Sure, sure, come on up, Scott.
I apologize. I had business I had to take care of, so. Council members, I'm Scott Kaminski. I live at 10 Key Lane Drive. I feel a great deal of empathy, if not sympathy, as I was a city council member in Bentonville for 11 years. And, uh, I know about your trials and tribulations and, uh, I wanted to visit with you a minute regarding this, uh, opportunity to buy a water line. Now, I'm looking at it from 30,000 feet. I'm looking at it, big picture, long-term. But I, anecdotally, as somebody on the Bentonville City Council, every time we purchased a utility of any kind that allowed us to exercise territorial clout, we did it and we never really ever regretted it. It didn't always fit our need at that point in time, but it did wind up allowing us to annex property, to do things, to increase our commercial, uh, retail areas at times that should've gone to other towns, other cities. We were able to use that and parlay that into, into that kind of enterprise, which allowed us, quite frankly, to increase our tax revenue dramatically, vis-à-vis sales tax. The Sam's Club, supposed to be in Rogers, it's in Bentonville. Anything south of 102, Neighborhood Market, supposed to be in Rogers, it's in Bentonville. Because we were able to get utilities to that area sooner. As I said, I don't know your particular set of circumstances, okay? I'm not here, I'm not an expert on that, but I think, you know, it, I think there's an opportunity here for Bella Vista, big picture, long-term, to be able to purchase this. And if it's managed properly, it becomes more than just a, a way to deliver a commodity. It becomes, quite frankly, a tool to, to, uh, to increase the size of the city, the city, that is, not, nothing else. And allow you, I think, and the city council to increase the retail footprint here in Bella Vista. And I think they're an opportunity, particularly Bella Vista has a lot of things going for it. One of it, believe it or not, is it has a POA. One thing we detested in Bentonville at times was dealing with the recreational department. We detested that. We had too many headaches and heartburn from that. You don't have to deal with that here. You don't have to deal with, uh, electrical utilities, electrical outages. You have, Bella Vista has a lot going for it, and it has I-49. And that's gonna get developed one way or another. And I hope you folks can see into the future, and I'm sure you can, through planning, et cetera, to where that can be advantageous to the people of Bella Vista. Where people come in here, they spend their money, they get back on the highway, they leave. Instead of Bella Vistans going into Bentonville or to Jay, Missouri, or wherever, and spend their money and then come back.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only point I wanted to make, so.
Good. Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. So now we're entering into the council reply. And again, it'll be the same kind of format. And, um, they are speaking on behalf of themselves, not necessarily, uh, speaking on behalf of council, but it gives them an opportunity to reply. This is something that we haven't had in the past and, and we're kicking it off tonight. So, why don't I just start at one end?
Reference to parking on the gravel. He was here long before we made that rule. He should be grandfathered in. If he ever sells that, then I'm sure we can go after who's ever next, as we do the other.
It's not the law.
Well, I understand that. You know, he should be grandfathered in. We shouldn't be able to go back after the fact. And if he's been there as long as he says, and he has, and we've been incorporated since '07, why are we now just catching up with him? He, you know, that's a little bit weird if it took that long to go ahead and correct this. And if you go by his house and see what he's got, you wouldn't have a problem with it at all. You put SB2 down and after a while, it looks pretty bad, and then you gotta do it again. What he's got is gorgeous. Anybody here would be more than proud of the yard that man's got and the way he keeps it up. And because he's been here long before the fact, he shouldn't be made to go back and do something else. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Larry, anything?
I guess my, my comment would be is that we might want to revisit the policy that says you're not allowed to park a vehicle or trailer or other thing on the decorative stone, which is what I believe Mr. Fullberson has. And whether that is still a, a valid policy or there may be nuances to that that might permit its acceptability in one instance, but maybe not in another instance, uh, I don't know if that's possible, but it might be possible.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. Linda?
Um, I did previously, uh, after the gentleman was here the last time, have a discussion with Doug Tapp about why this was not grandfathered in, because my understanding was any practice that was documented before we were a city would be grandfathered. And it was explained to me that that particular instance was not grandfathered. So I'm a little confused about why not and what is and what isn't. Thank you.
I'll be happy to explain all this to you at a work session, but this is something we dealt with 11 years ago in depth and addressed it. So I'll, uh, but tonight, I can't do that.
Okay, we'll do it at the work session coming up, then?
Yeah, so I want to understand it too. I want, the issue isn't whether he can park where he's parking, the issue is what type of rock he's parking on, right?
Yep.
Okay. Cause I did actually drive by and see where he has parked, and he does have a large property. But making comment about it, whether it should be SB2 or be decorative rock, I really, you know, that was something I wasn't aware of before I, I came here. I just know what, the SB2's supposed to compact better and make a better base or something like that. But anyway, it's not about whether he can park, it's about what, what type of rock he's parking on.
Okay, John?
Uh, the only comment I had is, uh, I do think this is something might be interesting for us to look into about the smoke, you know? Very early on, when the stump dump, uh, situation came up, a bunch of folks from the state came and there was a meeting at Metfield. And everybody was focused on a lot of other things, so they, I think a lot of people didn't even notice this comment. One of the, uh, state, uh, agency heads said, "If it was up to me, there wouldn't be any burning allowed." And, uh, burning is pollution. I, I just thought that was interesting that, uh, you know, there's a lot of different views on that, and certainly, smoke can be, uh, very obnoxious.
Thank you, John. Steve?
Mayor Christie, just want to mark this occasion for our first opportunity for city council to reply to public input. I had, before I was seated on the city council, I had attended several city council meetings, some of those where it was obvious that the people providing input and the people who attended the meeting felt like it would be appropriate for there to be city council response. And after the meetings, when I checked to see, why didn't anybody feel compelled to respond, what I learned was, it was against the rules. And in fact, not only was it against the rules, it was against the law, because the rules for our meetings have been placed into our city ordinances. And so tonight, we begin this process, we, we changed that rule, uh, that allows city council to respond to public input. It may be something that is useful going forward. There may be times where we don't feel compelled to reply. A lot of times, as you, as you've pointed out, when we do reply, we're speaking for ourselves, not speaking for the entirety of the city council. But I think it, it makes us a more engaged, more responsive city council, and I'm glad we have that. And I look forward to the other business on our agenda today, where we're gonna contemplate moving the rest of our meeting rules out of city ordinances, just adopt them as rules. That way, if we decide we want to tweak something, we want to make a change in how we conduct these meetings going forward, that we would be able to do that without having to change an ordinance and wait 60 days for that to go into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. And what he's alluding to on your agenda, under new business, is A, which is an ordinance, and item C, which is a resolution. And we'll be getting there. Okay, anybody else? Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. Uh, we have two, I'm going to bundle them into one motion, um, for the June 24th city council meeting and then the July 22nd council meeting, which was probably the shortest council meeting we've ever had because we didn't have a quorum. Uh, but nevertheless, there were minutes attached to that as well. Is there any discussion about them? Seeing now that entertain a motion to approve both sets of minutes within one motion.
The only comment, Mayor, that I would have is that there are a couple of words that are inappropriately used. Uh, as an example, it might, the word might, uh, likely have been thing in its, in its think or something like that is in its place, so it might be just a spell-checking error.
Okay, well, we have the ability to go back and change it.
Or typo.
Okay, if it's a typo. Anybody else? Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, excuse me, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Wilms?
Aye.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carry, 6-0.
Thank you. Hopefully, you had a chance to see the June financial reports. We continue to be in very good shape. Our reserves are well over 55% of the, um, of the unrestricted revenue. However, there will be some, uh, charges coming in now as we, as we get through the paving season. And, um, I sent you out the tax documents today for the month of July. Uh, we're well ahead of last year. We're still shy on the budget comparison. However, of course, the, um, the new growth that we've been seeing in the, in the homes over the last few years has increased the, um, property tax, which has more than covered the shortfall. Any questions or discussions, or if you do, you can pop in and see Carrie, and she can take you through it?
I just have one question. So reserves right now are like reflecting like $8.8 million, and typically, for the last couple of years, and even up till recently, is like more like 7.7, 7.8. So that's probably not really a true reserve number, because we haven't spent some of the capital improvement money out, that's gonna be allocated for this year.
That's true.
Do you know about what that number might be?
It'll probably drop down to about 6.4. That's what I'm anticipating, because there's trail stuff in there, too.
Okay, yeah, cause we allocated an extra million dollars this year for streets.
For streets as well, yep. Okay. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carry, 6-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to old business. The first is a resolution that was tabled from the June meeting, expressing the intent of the city council no longer to purchase of a portion of the Centerton Water System in accordance with the memorandum of understanding currently in place between the parties. Discussion?
I would just like to do one thing real quickly. Um, and I'll just say upfront, just so, don't want to make anyone nervous on the council here. Um, we had a really robust conversation about this at the work session last Monday, about an hour's worth of conversation. Lot of back and forth, lot of input from everyone. The only thing I would like to do, I have a map here, and, um, I'm just gonna very briefly just kind of outline, uh, what this water purchase looks like to us from the city of Centerton, just, just for, for reference.
It's on the stand. Just pull it out.
Turn one of those chairs around. Let me hold it.
It's right there.
Just take it out.
Oh, he put it in there, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize, took it around. Okay, can you hear me? Yep. Um, so real quickly, all I want to highlight is the Centerton Water District, okay? That is in yellow, right here. This is the boundaries of where their water authority is, okay? Right here is Lockloman. Here's Windsor. And this would be the Hawasi area right here. And this is, um, 279 and 72. So the, uh, water district that, or, or water purchase that we are talking about making So the water district that, or, or water purchase that we are talking about making is a line that runs up 279, just like this, stops right here, then it comes over and actually includes this little shopping center area that we're in. And then the line runs on down here. I believe the fire department is included in that, correct? Number four is included in it down here. So this is the area that we're talking about, okay? Something I want to mention is this is part of the Grabot city limit right here. You can see they have annexed basically all the way up to Bella Vista, okay? Not really necessarily a good thing for us, but that's what they've done. So this is a section that, this is what we're talking about right now. The only comment I want to make about it before we start talking about it up here is it isn't necessarily just opportunity in this particular area, but in the future, it can open up opportunities for us in other areas of Bella Vista, okay? And I don't want to go into all the details of that right now, that really gets too much, too much off into the weeds, but it does. Hopefully tonight, this resolution, I mean, I don't know if we're going to vote on it actually, or maybe just move it down for another month or two because of some information that's unfolded, but I just wanted to give, give people a heads up or perspective on where this is. And say, it opens up possibilities in other Bella Vista where we could possibly take water to that the POA does not service right now, that's outside of the POA boundaries.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
One last comment. This is 49 right here, this quarter, right here. All I want to say is we have escape routes out of the west area at Highlands and Glasgow, Hawasi Road, and 279 for people to real quickly jump on I-49 eventually, 549 right now, and, and fly right into Bentonville, right into Rogers, Springdale, wherever they're going to spend their money, and not have to filter back through Bella Vista with the potential of stopping at any of our businesses and spend any money in Bella Vista, which helps us generate sales and use tax revenue, which pays for fire, police, streets, et cetera.
Okay, some of the discussion that we had at the work session included the fact that those water mains start, I believe, as a six inch pipe and worked them, and worked their way down to a two inch pipe, to the point that we're entertaining building a, a police station beside the streets department, and we can't sprinkle it with water down that pipe. So what we've had to do is, is gain approval from the POA to bring their water over for the sprinkleroni if we build a building. If we get increased retail down there, very little of that line is actually in Bella Vista. Most of it is, is on the Gravot side. So we would have to do perhaps the annexation type of routine, Scott, that you mentioned, but we would also have to build that pipe and make it bigger. As you know, our economic base is not big, our commercial base is, is quite small. That too is a concern. And in a recent survey that was done last fall, our residents said the three things they want us to zero in on are police, fire, and streets, because we have seen tremendous growth for Bella Vista, tremendous growth in new housing permits over the last four years, to the point where the infrastructure is now demanding more services. We've got to watch the roads, and we're trying to do that and be fiscally responsible by ensuring that the infrastructure is there. Nobody mentioned in the survey that they wanted us to purchase a water system. Truly, I understand, going down and looking into the future, that this could definitely be something that would help. We would also have to have sewer down there, and one of the disadvantages that we face, and Scott, this was something similar to what you mentioned, is we don't own a sewer company. It's a private company. And we would have to convince them that it's a good idea to go down there as well. So there are a lot of challenges facing us. Personally, I'd rather address what the residents want us to do with the little bit of money that we've got. So I approached Centerton last week and asked if their commission would give us the right of first refusal for a negotiated period of time, and also guarantee that they would not sell that pipe to Gravot. And they gave it due consideration and said no. And they would expect an answer from the council, from our council, as to whether or not we are going to purchase by December. So that was the new information that Doug mentioned just a few minutes ago. Is there other discussion?
Yeah, well, Larry, you want to?
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is a tough one, you know, it's kind of like, where do I start? First of all, I would just like to say that when you do a survey of the residents of, of any city, and of course, we're in a unique situation here, I don't know how many of them, a light bulb would come on, that the purchase of a water department would be a good thing for the city, you know, because it might open up possibilities for commercial retail development in the future, possibly even a, a small industrial area, something like that. I really don't, I really don't think that that would be probably top of mind, just because they're not involved in the city government, or they've never had a history or knowledge of. So, just, real quickly, just from the brief, or the conversation that we had last week, I did get a couple of emails, and, and I'm not going to, like, reveal people's names right here, I don't think that's necessary, and they probably wouldn't appreciate it. Here's one. "Whereas I do not know all the ins and outs, financial impact, nor can I predict future development along the west corridor with certainty for the city of Bella Vista, I am appreciative of your work toward the purchasing of this water deal from Centerton. My intention is to let you know that I appreciate your work toward looking forward in Bella Vista's future smart growth. Many residents share my thoughts." Then I got a follow-up email, same person. "I've done quite a bit of campaigning on this since Monday night, and have been on Facebook and meeting with a few residents who said they didn't understand why would we buy water, for instance, water from Centerton. I guess they didn't understand, so I explained it as best I could, and by the time I was finished explaining, they were in agreement that we should move ahead with this plan, whatever the next step might be." Got a, got another one. I can dig it out here. I don't know what I did with it. Okay, I got another one, but I'll, I'll table that one for right now. So, the city's webpage, when we open it up, here's what it says. "A 2018 study estimated Bella Vista has a retail market of approximately $137 million annually. However, roughly $129 million of this market is lost to surrounding communities outside Bella Vista. Thus, there's enormous potential for retail and restaurant growth." We know we haven't really had any of that here, and of course, we know, we all know we have a major developer here. We can question why they do what they do, or why they don't do what they don't do. I don't really know. All I will, all I can say right now is this is one opportunity. We have to operate autonomously as a city and mine our own possibilities. Don't know how long it'll take, don't know how far into the future. I do know, like, right now, we can buy the asset, build it, we co, build as we go. Improvements to the infrastructure of the system or expansion of the system do not have to take place now or even in the near term. This is a long-term investment. What I would hope is that future city council members, after we are all long gone, will be sitting around a table talking about the big possibilities that this water department allowed them, so they can move forward on a retail development, a industrial development, or what have you. As far as like startup costs, it's very minimal after we purchase the department. What would allow us to do is create our own public work department that includes streets, water, sewer. Again, sewer's not in this conversation right now. However, I did spend quite a bit of time down at Village Wastewater and having a conversation with people down there to better understand their situation. And it may be a possibility that we could utilize their sewer, don't know right now. You don't know that if you don't have conversations with them. Initially, we would only need one person part-time, you know, to, to manage this department. Hyphal was managed with one person for 400 customers. This particular water department right now has 84 customers. And Centerton is more than willing to help train that person. As far as assets to manage the department, we can probably do that internally with our existing assets. We don't need a lot of inventory, we have to carry some to reply, to, to repair brakes, things like that. If we have anything major, Centerton would contract with us to, to manage anything that might be major. You know what, I mean, I could go on and on and on about this, into the details and get into the weeds. Here's what's happened, even since last Monday and before that, I've been out on the street, and I've been contacting people and talking to people, key people, that are involved in city utilities, i.e. water sewer, but I've also been talking to residents of Bella Vista that have been involved in the history of Bella Vista and the development of Bella Vista, you know, to get their perspective. So far, I haven't talked to anyone that doesn't think that we should do this, you know? They do understand the long-term opportunity that it may bring to us. And, and in having these conversations, what's happened is, it isn't, it, my thoughts don't just now center around the water department, but there are a whole myriad of opportunities that might be out there for us, and we won't be able to make them happen unless we sit down with a map, start looking at different areas around Bella Vista, understanding what's out there, understanding our existing infrastructure and where that may be able to go.
Bella Vista.
And open up opportunities for the future. And one of the things I'm frustrated with is that is not happening. And I don't, do not understand how we could vote tonight and vote to kill this thing without having some of those conversations, especially in light of the fact that now we know we at least have until December. We have something else, too, to think about. The Mercy Way Bridge, we have put that in a grant, grant request for the Walton Family Foundation. We don't have an answer for it yet, and I don't know when that's due, but if we come back and find out that they may be willing to help us with our portion of the Mercy Way Bridge expansion, I mean, that's a pretty nice chunk of change right there that we could put forth toward this water department purchase. Larry, I'm going to let you kind of take it with some of your thoughts right now, because I've got so much here, you know, and, and I don't want to just like lather on forever.
Okay, let's, let's flush it through me, Doug, if it's okay with you. Okay?
Okay.
All ready? Larry?
I, I guess I would disagree with the mayor's conclusion about the survey. Most of the residents in Bella Vista recognize that the Bella Vista POA provides their water. And they don't realize that there are properties in Bella Vista that can't get serviced because the POA cannot service them, hence the reason for the city wanting to acquire a water utility, opening the door for that advent. So it was a question that was, I guess, without all of the facts, was answered in the fashion to their best knowledge. The reality is, is in the comprehensive plan, there are numerous references in there brought about by the committee, the guiding committee, and the public input sessions that said, "The city needs to promote economic development by making strategic improvement to the public realm." Now, the simple interpretation of that is, the city needs to provide public facilities or public works facilities to make developable lands developable that don't have such access for development today. We can look around the city and see Cooper lands, take the Highlands where the Arts and Crafts Fair is, that property has been available for commercial development for probably about 30 years, if you go back to when it was platted. It hasn't developed. Well, we don't know why it hasn't developed, it's owned by the developer, but it hasn't developed. It is commercial viable land. The reality is, we have a lot of that in Bella Vista that hasn't developed. I'm not being critical to the, about the developer, but we have other land that can't develop that is developable, and the owners want to see it developed. We have land along Highway 71. There are lands along 279 that Mr. Kaminsky related to in his comments, specifically stating that Sam's Club is in Bentonville, not in Rogers. And why is that? Because Bentonville could provide the utilities for that development. And having that water system from Hawasi into Bella Vista, which is the portion we're initially proposing to acquire with about 85 customers, puts us in the driver's seat as for development along that whole corridor. We own the water system, we can provide water for the development. And yes, it will potentially run a little deficit in the red initially. A slight adjustment in the rate structure will help minimize that. The reality is, it's an investment in our future, a big investment. It makes us a player in the game. Without having a chip in the game, we have no say in the game. If we're not a player, we have no say. If we are a player, we have a lot to say. We have a lot of control. In speaking with the Village Wastewater Group, as Doug has done, they will have capacity or more capacity along 279 to extend sewer service. It's not there today, but it's in their plan. So the plan here, the proposal here, is to plan for the future of the city, enable development of undevelopable lands by owning a water system, and enabling that to occur. And we will have costs down the road, but if you want to get a return, you have to put a buck in the machine to play the game. And so our initial investment is nominal. At best, we have the licensed operators on staff to do this. They lack probably real-life experience in operating a system, but they are licensed to meet state requirements. Our investment in this is minimum, under 100, under $500,000 for the full boat to get us going. It's much less than that if we rely upon the city of Centerton utility for assistance in that startup program. So I would submit that, I don't want to see this to be a boondoggle, that's happened in the past. You may remember that the city of Bella Vista wanted to annex the whole land area down through and including Hawasi. It was a boondoggle. It was a black mark on a prior council for their lack of effort, lack of effort, to communicate with the residents of what the benefits of being in Bella Vista would be versus being in the county. And after that fell apart because of lack of proper effort, it's a black mark on our face, and we have Grabot at our back door. We can change that by being able to provide water for development on those lands, just as Mr. Kaminsky pointed out with the Sam's Club situation. And I would submit that we would be foolish in not taking advantage of implementing this opportunity for the future of Bella Vista.
Okay, anybody else? Linda?
I'd like to say something, Peter.
Okay, and then, okay.
You know, I've been on council a little bit over four and a half years, and we've been a city since 2007. And that entire time, I've heard how the sky is falling because we don't have enough sales tax dollars. And that entire time, we've had a balanced budget, and in the time I've been on council, we've had a surplus of seven to eight million dollars. And I'm constantly hearing how the sky is falling. We've made the fire department better, we've made the police department better, we've made the streets way better, we've accomplished all kinds of things, but the sky is falling because we don't have enough sales tax dollars. Number one, if the administration is against doing this, I, I don't think it's a good idea to do it. Second thing is, the benefits are extremely speculative. You know, there's some, some of the property is already owned by Cooper and has water, some of the key areas of property. There's places here and there that don't have water, but we'd have to buy this, lose $30,000 every year, or more, at least $30,000 every year, and invest all kinds of other money, much more than the cost of buying it, in order to be able to supply people with water. And we have these speculative ideas about how reserved lands out west, which are reserved by Cooper, will be an X-bios just because we have a little bit of water. It's highly speculative. Now, as far as what we've accomplished, in 2012, our city taxes were 1.3 million. In 2018, these are actual numbers, it was a little bit, this is just city taxes, not any other income, is a little bit over 2 million. It increased 60% in six years. That's 10- That's ten percent a year, but the sky is falling. I'm constantly being told the sky is falling. Here's a list of things, this isn't everything, so I apologize to any businesses I left out. This is just off the top of my head, what's happened in the last four and a half years. We annexed the property, uh, that, where the Walgreens sits. The C V S was built. The Mercy Medical Clinic and Emergency Room were built, the, at the time, first emergency room in the state that wasn't connected with the hospital. Now, some of these may not, and cornerstone pharmacies in there also. Some of these things may not all be tax-paying entities, but they're clearly a, a big benefit to the city. Java Dews was started, all the food trucks have been started, Premier Dermatology was started, and the vacant bank building on Reardon Road, the Harps is being expanded by fifty percent.
And open up.
On Center East, having a facelift. J.J.'s Restaurant was started. On the west side, El Poblito was started, Rhythm and Q was start, all this last four and a half years. Rhythm and Q was started. The new Hall Dermatology is being built on the, on seventy-one. Uh, there's a new restaurant, a couple of stores being built between Walgreens and Crylike. Uh, new restaurant at Lake Point, and a new restaurant at Bella Vista Country Club, those are, you know, part of the P O A, but they're sales tax-paying entities that clearly are, uh, Lake Point was closed for several years, clearly they're, uh, doing way better than they were. Uh, there's forty miles of trails on the east side, as most people know, and we're having another fifty miles built on the, uh, west side. Uh, there's a new liquor store at Cunningham Corner. Uh, Gossano's has been greatly expanded. And, uh, you know, a lot of people notice, which I do too, that we don't have a hotel, and that would be nice to get one, but we have quite a few of, uh, V R B Os, Airbnbs, vacation rentals, all of which are tax-paying, if you added up those rooms, it's way more than the rooms in a hotel. There's hundreds of them in Bella Vista, and they're all tax-paying entities. So, you know, I don't think the sky is falling, and I think this, uh, transaction is too speculative, and if the administration doesn't want to do it, I don't think we should do it. They're the executive branch, and, uh, they're the ones that have to quarterback the team, so to speak.
Thank you. Linda?
I, I find it interesting that we're concerning about something being too speculative. When you look at, if Cooper had worried about Bella Vista being too speculative, we wouldn't even be here because Bella Vista would not exist. Several years ago, council felt that this was a good way to go with purchasing the water company. I am strongly in favor of it, as are all the people that I have discussed it with, because I don't want to be the person five or six years down the road when we've boxed ourselves into a position where we can't supply water to a particular property where a commercial entity could go in and say, "Boy, did we shoot ourselves in the foot when we stopped that purchase." I think we need to look towards the future, we have to have a good vision, and purchasing this water company as the previous council started in motion is the first step in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, Jim?
Nobody's told me what it's gonna cost, bottom line, Larry just said five hundred thousand dollars, and we've been talking about a million and a half just to buy the system, so I don't know where the five hundred is.
No.
So, you know, that's a different number than I've heard all along.
The, the cost, the purchase cost is about three hundred, and then there's about, if you do a full-fledged startup cost for the amenities that the City of Bella Vista would need to fully support the utility, uh, the estimate is a hundred and seventy thousand. That's a, a, a heavy estimate. You can do it for a lot less than that, with assistance from Centerton, you can do it for a whole lot less than that. There are certain things in addition to the purchase that we will need to do. The million dollars, or two million dollars, or four million dollars that's been bandied around has to do with adding infrastructure to do other things, and that's a decision that would be made when and at such time as development, it would be viable, and the expansion of capacity in that system needed to support that growth. What this does is it provides us the insurance policy and the ability to provide service to lands unserviceable by the two water utilities in the city now that have limited service area capability because of their restrictions.
Well, anything I say is gonna get beat up real bad, but the bottom line is, we don't have a clue what this is really gonna cost us till all these little things kick in. And everybody says could, or should, or may. Nobody's got anything concrete, we don't have anything concrete. He talked about increasing rates. The residential people on the line could be double. The commercial on the line could be up to fifty percent. Is that fair? If we go ahead and expand the system, even initially, we have to bring a new line in from Centerton, at least to Rogers Road, to get enough water, do what we would like to do right off the bat. And then there's no guarantee that we can put anybody on that. Because two seventy-nine doesn't have much commercial on it, there aren't too many people on it, the biggest one is Leisure Hills, and we can't force anybody who's not on the system to get on the system, so there may not be any money there. My biggest concern, and I was for this since the beginning, and in the long run, I'm still for it, except to the fact that nobody's told me what it's gonna cost for sure, or even close, and how long we're gonna run backwards on this till we get back to even. Because if it's a Cooper piece of ground that we can do commercialize, rest assured, Cooper's gonna get water to it, regardless if it's there now, regardless if it's in the P O A or not now. If it's a Cooper piece of ground and Cooper sells it, guaranteed you're gonna get water to it. It's got nothing to do with us, or Centerton, or anybody else. So until somebody gives me real live numbers and can tell me how long it's gonna have to hang out, because we barely hanging on to what we have now, we just don't know. And that's where I'm sort of with John on this, nobody can tell us what it's really gonna cost. We have a startup number, but that's just a startup number. Once you get into that, you're gonna open a Pandora's Box as far as money running out, just trying to keep it going and improve it to where it's gonna be viable for these people to hook up. And if we do get somebody commercially that's west of the Boys and Girls Club, that's all in the City of Grabbit, we're not gonna gain anything from that. Not gonna gain anything from that. If they're gonna build between the Boys and Girls Club and the edge of Hiwasi, that's all Grabbit. You can build all you want, we don't gain anything from that other than water hookups. None of the exchanges on Highway forty-nine are in the city. I heard the couple that are close, so when you get water out there and they build, we're not gonna gain from those commercial businesses. And how long is that gonna take? An example I use, and I got beat down a couple of times from this council, example I use, thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago, they built the road from Fayetteville to Fort Smith. Lovely road. How much has been developed on that road in all that time? You've got another section of that road that runs from the state line to Joplin. What's been developed along that section of road? Can we afford to wait that long till something pops? I don't think so, with our current income level, because this isn't gonna bring us any money early. It's gonna be a while. And the thing is, how long a while? We don't know. My crystal ball's not that clear.
Okay, Steve?
Mayor Christie, this is, uh, I'll be very brief, this is a complex proposition. I do think parts of it are highly speculative. I think the City of Centerton has been gracious as they've offered this proposition and stand by for an answer. They've indicated recently that they seek an answer by December first, I believe. There are still questions, uh, that are unanswered, uh, that if we can take a little more time and make sure that everybody has the most important questions answered about this proposition, and what the probabilities are, and how long it might take for this to become a break-even proposition first, before it's ever revenue generating or even, uh, inspiring additional development. So, so my sense of it is, as we sit here tonight, that we ought to not back out of the deal tonight, that we don't need to back out of the deal tonight, that we should continue to, uh, invest time, uh, and, and answer some of these questions that are still outstanding, and so that we all do complete due diligence and can come to the table without a lot of question marks and make a determination about this in the future.
So you're suggesting we table, is that what I'm hearing?
I am.
Okay. Before we get to it, if you want to go this route, Doug can't do it alone. And Larry, I'm not sure if you're going to be able to stand back far enough, you know, to look at the other arguments, because you've been in it since day one along with me for the past three years. So I appreciate that. Is there someone else who can step forward, perhaps from the other side, that would also help Doug so that we can get?
On Cent.
It answered, so that when we bring it back, whenever that's going to be, perhaps as far as, as the November meeting, then we will truly have all the answers covered. And there are some, still some legal questions as well. Can you run it at a loss, or does it have to be self-sustaining? And the statute says one thing, but some people think, "No, you can run it at a loss." We need to get that answered. Okay? So, I'd like at least one more person from council, please, to get involved. Staff doesn't have the bandwidth to be able to do this, and frankly, they don't have the expertise. But Doug can't do it alone. So I would look to other members of council, please, to, um, help Doug. If you're going to work together, I remind you that if you're going to meet together, you still have to announce it as a public meeting, and maybe that's not a bad thing either. Okay, so he can get some public input as we go along. So, what would be your timeframe, Steve?
We should take as much time as we need to get the answers that we need and not hold Centerton up.
Okay, so that would be the November, uh, regular meeting.
Mike, again, I don't know what their expectation is. Is their expectation to have a word from us by December about whether we're ready to start, or are they wanting to get this done by December?
No, they'd like to hear by December if we're ready to start.
Okay.
Okay, that's the way, I sent all of you the, of the email I got from Frank, that's the way I, I interpreted it. Okay?
Mayor Christie, I, I appreciate very much, uh, Councilmember Fowler's efforts to this particular proposition. And his hours are not the only hours. I think there are considerable other hours that the City Council has invested to try to wrap our minds around this very, again, complex proposition. So, I, I don't think he's out there by himself. I think the questions that are out there, we need to, we need to collect them, and then we need to find out who can answer them, and I'm happy to help with that.
Okay, fair ball, thank you. Okay, Linda?
And, and I'm also been starting to do some work from the real estate potential development end of things.
Okay, let's make sure we're all coordinated, okay, so we're not all over the place? Because we need to get this tied up with a bow on it one way or the other by the end of November, or by the, uh, by the regular November meeting. Okay? Yes, Larry?
I would suggest, Mayor, that we continue to place it on our, uh, work agenda for discussion to kind of.
Yeah, yeah, sure, that's not a problem at all. Yep. Not a problem.
So is the, is the motion to table?
I would just like, just real, I, I just wanna say, so I, I actually, like I said, there, there's so much, you know, that's going on, in all my, on all the conversations that I've had, to chronologically or, or in, in a, in a straight line, kind of like lay them all out. So there's more comments I could make that I, let's say, kind of left on the table, but I won't tonight because maybe it'd be for future consideration. But there are a couple of things, you know, and, and because I, I take a little exception to it, um, I, I, I don't think I heard anyone say that the sky is falling, ever. But let's face it, we have a revenue, revenue problem in Bella Vista. What's happened is, we've managed a very, very tight budget. There are other headcount positions we could desperately use in Bella Vista, but we just don't fund them. You know, uh, we need, uh, additional building inspectors, code enforcement officers, we don't have a planning department at all, which could help with some of this stuff. We had to let it, or not had to, but an economic development manager is no longer with us, which could, which could help with some of this research, you know, that we're ended up having to do because we don't have anybody else to do it. And I, I didn't know that whatever the administration wanted to do, I was just supposed to roll over and do it. I thought we were supposed to do the legwork and the homework to follow up and be sure that everything that we were hearing was, you know, right. And not necessarily that it's not right, but just to, just to do that back, that backup check, you know? I thought that's why we ran for these seats and why we were elected, and I just thought it was part of the responsibility. I will say too, uh, sales tax, sky's not falling, but just to put it in perspective for everyone, and it's been stated several times, ten cities closest to population of Bella Vista in the state of Arkansas, if you align them at one percent, straight up and down, all the cities charge a different percent of sales and use tax percentage, right? One percent, one and a half, two percent, two and a half percent. But if you equate everybody to one percent in the ten closest cities to us, the two next closest cities, uh, are Van Buren at three point nine million dollars, and Jacksonville at four million dollars. Bella Vista generates two million dollars. So, there's an issue there. Again, are we gonna have, uh, car dealerships here? Probably not, but there certainly are a myriad of, uh, commercial opportunities that, that would exist for, for Bella Vista. And just, just one last thing, so, two seventy-nine up here, and, and where we're talking, where Grabbit come up, comes up and it butts Bella Vista, we already have a streets department there. We're gonna build a police department there. There's prime real estate, basically just right across the street that's in Grabbit, is definitely a possibility for Bella Vista in the near future, you know? If we run the water, we could require those property owners to purchase water from Bella Vista, you know, or else not supplying with water. Just, just as an FYI, anybody that looks into this could figure that out. And then we have a state-of-the-art fire department just right down the street, less than a mile, that can provide fire protection. I mean, it's like a, kind of a natural area for development in the future, especially as I forty-nine has developed out there, you know? And, uh, the west development right now, current year-to-date, so two thousand and seventeen, the west built, built fifty-seven percent of the homes that the east did in number. In two thousand and eighteen, they built sixty-one percent of the homes on the west as the east. In two thousand and nineteen, year-to-date, through August, at which we're only like five building permits behind this year versus last year, the west is, is at ninety-four percent of what the east is. Focus is being moved out to the west very quickly, and a question was proposed at the work session last week, well, what is that development, the water department? So, I understand what that means for the west, well, what does it mean for the rest of residents of Bella Vista? It means more sales and use tax dollars in the future at some point, which all Bella Vistans benefit from. So anyway, the more conversations I have, the more opportunities it looks like are out there, and I appreciate table on this, I'll work with this on anybody, and I'll spend as much time as, as required to try to figure it out and try to have the right conversations with the right people.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion on the table from.
There's an auto motion.
Excuse me, okay.
I've been trying to clarify what the motion is.
Okay. I move that we table this resolution until the November meeting.
Okay. Second? Have a second?
Somebody's seconded over there.
Okay, any discussion? All right.
Ready for a vote? Okay. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Okay, moving along to a resolution that is still part of old business, this has been around for a couple of months as well, is approving change order number one to a contract with Centerpoint Contractors in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars for construction of additional trail crossings in lieu of tunnels as part of the Bella Vista Trail Expansion Project. For the last, um, two work sessions, we've had representatives of the trails come out and speak to us. For those of you that may not be familiar to it, there were two tunnels that had to be canceled, um, one in particular because there was buried fiber optic that we didn't know was there in the first place. And it turns out that there's a fiber vault underground which would cost millions of dollars to move. So they had to make a change. So they had to make a change, a change order to put an over-the-road crossing and move it up. So we approved the deduction side of it back in June, and that was $188, sorry, $188,000. And this is $43,000 the other way so that they can now put the over-the-road elsewhere. So the net is about $130,000 odd thousand that the builders need, remember, this isn't our money, that the builders need to be able to put back in the reserves because their reserves were so tight in the first place because the cost of steel went up. It answered.